Good evening, everyone. My name is Aaron Tuckfield. I'm the chairman of the Macomb Township Zoning Board of Appeals, and I am calling this meeting to order at 6:30 on Thursday, October the 6th. If you would stand with me for the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Very good. Ms. Lawson, will you please call the roll?
Yes, sir. Starting with Member DeCoster.
Here.
Member DeBruin.
Present.
Member Piper.
Here.
Chairman Tuckfield.
Here.
And Member Lawson is here as well.
All right, all members are present, and I should note that these are all of our regular members. None of the alternates are here this evening. Item four is to address any conflicts of interest. At this time, I'm going to have Ms. Lawson again call the roll. The question is if any members have a conflict with any items on tonight's agenda. If any members have a conflict, please signify by saying yes. And if you do not have any conflicts, please signify by saying no. Ms. Lawson, please call the roll.
Okay, I'll start with myself. Member Lawson, no. Chairman Tuckfield?
No.
Member Piper?
No.
Member DeBruin?
No.
Member DeCoster?
No.
All right, with that being said, we're going to move on to the approval of this evening's agenda, which is item five. Are there any motions on tonight's agenda?
Mr. Chairman, I'll make that motion.
Motion by Mr. Piper.
Support.
Support by Mr. DeCoster. I think he got there first on. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed by saying nay. That motion carries, and tonight's agenda is adopted. The next item is the approval of the previous meeting minutes. I believe we actually have two sets of minutes tonight, so we should take these separately. I think we're going to start with the minutes for September the 1st, which would be our last regularly scheduled meeting minutes. Is there any discussion or motions on this item?
Motion to approve.
Is there support?
Support.
Support by Ms. Lawson. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of approving the meeting minutes from September the 1st as presented, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed by saying nay. That motion carries, and those minutes are approved. Next, we will move on to the meeting minutes of September the 8th. This was a special meeting. Do I have any discussion or motion on this item?
One quick correction, if you will. I don't want to exaggerate during the comments. I said I walked, stated that I walked with Joe Warren for the first 12 miles. I only walked for the first six. I walked a total of 12, because I walked six back. But I only walked six miles with Joe.
Fair enough. I'm not sure that most people would quibble at the point that you actually walked 12 miles, but fair enough, Dave. All right, with that correction noted, is there any motions?
I'll make the motion to accept the corrected minutes.
Motion by Mr. Piper. Is there support?
Support.
Support by Ms. Lawson. All those in favor of approving the amended minutes, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed by saying nay.
Abstain.
That motion carries, and for the record, I believe there's one abstention. Mr. DeBruin abstains because he was not here. All right, that moves us on to item seven, which is old business. That would be 7A is our first item within old business. A variance request from the zoning ordinance for 24095 Kiway Drive. This would be with regards to section 10.0331. A request to go from one accessory building to two accessory buildings for permanent parcel 0836206009. Mr. Skurdo is our planning consultant this evening. And Mr. Skurdo, could you take us through the department recommendations?
Yes, the property owner would like to retain a second, it doesn't show up on your aerial, but would like to retain a second shed, which is near the left upper corner of the house in the rear yard. The applicant requests a variance to allow the second accessory building where the ZBA or the ordinance only permits one. In addition, another thing is certain separations. A separation of 10 feet from the house is required. One foot is in place right now. And there's also a separation of seven and a half feet from the side property line, and two feet are in place.
Very good, Mr. Skurdo. Thank you very much. Is there any questions for Mr. Skurdo from the board? Mr. Skurdo, I did have a few before we get to the applicant. You indicated that there's a couple of other items here that would not fall in compliance with the ordinance.
Right.
Would they, if we were to grant this variance tonight, would there be additional variances required for this property, this building to stay? Or could we attach that? If we were to approve it, would we have the leeway to attach that to the variance? Might be a question for Mr. Aloya.
I'm going to lean over to Mr. Aloya on this one.
Asking about whether you can attach conditions?
Um, here's, if I can clarify, Ben.
Yes.
It's like, if you look at the drawing up there, the application specifically asks for a location of a second accessory structure, which is circled on there. If that structure is allowed, and I believe that structure is in place already, if it's allowed, they are still deficient in the separation from the house to the shed. They need 10 feet. They've got one feet. They're also deficient in the separation from the, be the lateral direction, that'd be the west property line to the edge of the shed. They've got two feet, and seven and a half feet are required. Those weren't not specifically on the application. The application was just for a second shed, which is all, I believe is already in place.
So you're saying that the existing structure that's there?
Yes.
Is noncompliant with the setbacks?
And noncompliant as being a second structure.
And that is not part of the current application?
No, the current application was to allow a second structure.
I mean, I guess it's up to this board whether they would entertain a second variance as part of this request, as part of this procedure, or they would require a second application. Because the only thing before the board today is the second structure. You could, if you grant the variance, you could grant it on the condition that they get a second variance on the other structure. I don't believe you're required to decide that tonight, that the application has been filed. Plus it is.
So if I could, just to make sure I understand, within our leeway would be to say, well, obviously, we could deny it.
Yes.
We could approve it and say that they still would have to apply for a second variance.
Yes.
Or we could approve it and also approve additional variances with regards to setbacks.
Yeah, the question is whether they would, they could morally seek to amend their application to add that second variance, and it's in the board's discretion whether to entertain that.
Okay, very good. Want to make sure I understood that.
Thank you.
And then, the other question I had was with regards to the accessory structures. Do you know if they meet the ordinance as far as total accessory square footage? I know that we have a limitation.
Yes, the, both the structures are less than what's required. I believe they're allowed 200 square foot, and with the both together, they come out to 190 square feet.
Okay. All right, very good. Thank you, Mr. Skurdo. Is the applicant in the audience this evening? If you are, please come forward to the center microphone. If you could state your name and address for the record, and give any comments you might have.
Can I sit down?
Go ahead and sit down, yes. Our typical process, just for everybody here, is the applicant typically sits, because they'll be here the longest of anybody. And if anybody comes up to comment during public comment, they'll be at the podium over there. So, go ahead.
My name's Denise Sargent, and I'm the one who applied for the variance. I would have added that variance, what you're talking about, the measurements. But we thought that that, if it was accepted, that the position it's in is probably most favorable to all the neighbors to not be in front of their deck, or that's why we put it there. We were not trying to disrespect any laws when we called. They said we could put it in there. They never said anything about, or maybe they didn't know about a second shed. I didn't know that rule, or I would have never done that. So, we told them it was a Home Depot plastic shed, go ahead. I said, "Do we have to have a permit?" They said, "No." So from that point, we just kind of put it where it best fit in the yard, not to be disrespectful of any laws. So if we need to apply for another variance, we will. But it's sitting best because we put in those corrugating tubes to make sure the yard drained, and that's where the shed is, not sitting on those as well. So, we've done a lot to make our place look nice, and we would really appreciate if you would okay that. We also have two special needs children, that we need the extra space for some of their equipment, so.
Very good. Is there any questions for the applicant from the board? Mr. Skurdo, do you have something? I wasn't sure if you...
No, 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 no. I'm just, I'm paying it, just listening.
Okay, very good, sorry.
Actually, could I ask a question?
Go ahead, don't.
With the second structure, it sounds like it's not permanent. Could it be moved to be next to the first structure that, and then that would be in compliance? Because it's, you know, I don't know. I'm trying to see, are there situations that could...
As long as, as long as setbacks are met. If you grant, but again, if you grant the approval for the second structure, okay? As long as setbacks are met, they can put it.
Okay.
Located in the yard.
So, if we can kind of get back to procedure, I think we're, there was a presentation, then we can start asking questions later.
Yeah.
Okay. Typically, we have done some of both, but certainly we'll stick to it. All right, I did have a question for the applicant. Typically, our standard for a variance is what we refer to as practical difficulty. I'm not going to try to give the legal definition to it, other than typically, it's something that is unique to the parcel that would justify varying from the ordinance as it was written. Obviously, we know, you don't do this every day, but is there something specifically that you could, or you have, that would reference that outside of, obviously, the process sounds like you were trying to go through in good faith to do things. But do you have anything with regards to what we would refer to as a practical difficulty that would, that would refer to this, to this request?
I guess I'm still, I don't understand what you're asking.
So, the Zoning Board of Appeals, the standard for a variance is we look to see if there is a practical difficulty that exists to justify varying from the ordinance as it was written. So our job is typically not to decide whether the ordinance is good or bad, but whether there is, there is sufficient cause to vary from it. And the practical difficulty usually, and again, I'm not a lawyer. I'm not going to, not going to do Mr. Aloya's job, but typically, a common definition of it would be something that would keep you from using the parcel as most everyone else is able to use a parcel. Is the typical standard that we would look for?
The pool, we put in a pool, and it separates the yard. Some of the equipment for the kids are on one side, and there's a deck and a pool that doesn't allow for that equipment to be transferred. And it's the space, like, they have these, they have to ride tricycles and things that we just don't have room, and that's why we got the extra shed.
Okay. All right, very good. Any other questions for the applicant? Hearing none, I will take this out to the public if I can get a motion to open for public comment.
Motion to open public comment.
A motion by Ms. Lawson, support Mr. Piper. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed by saying nay. We're going to open up public comment. If anybody wishes to speak on this item, please come up to the podium here. State your name and address for the record, any comments you might have. And please keep in mind that we have a four-minute time limit for all speakers. Anyone wish to speak on this request? Seeing none, I will close the public comment unless there is any objections, and bring it back to the board for discussions or motions.
Mr. Chairman, I'm having trouble seeing the practical difficulty that we can hang our head on, on this, because it looks like a standard parcel. I don't see any special easements that are prohibiting having the, you know, the structure in there. You know, we got the, there's, we're three things here. It's the second structure that's against the ordinance, and there's two different setback rulings. So to me, the whole structure just doesn't look like it should be there.
Understood. Anyone else have any comments?
I intend to agree. I just don't see the practical difficulty in needing the second structure. These kind of things have come up before us previously. I know in my time here, I don't think we've approved one to where the request was just for the second building. I understand you may need it, you may need more space, but again, we look at that practical difficulty, and I don't see it in this situation.
I wish I could find a practical difficulty, because I...
I don't understand what practical difficulty it is. First of all, I believe the township gave us false information to begin with. And after we built it, a neighbor complained about it. We didn't know there were supposed to be two sheds. That shed costs quite a bit of money, and we put it there for a practical reason, not for anything. It's not, it's not doing any harm to anybody. We see them all over our subdivision, up against houses. I'll move it. The first violation we received was because it was not 10 feet away from the house and six feet away from the fence. And then our neighbors preferred it not to be, except for one. So, it went for a year, which we thought that it was fine where it was. And then all of a sudden, a year later, we can't have a second shed on the property. So, this has been going on for two and a half years, and we really don't feel, we would like to know a practical reason why we can't have it. Because it's not doing any harm, it's not causing any flooding, it's not causing any problems to the landscape. It's not causing any problems to anybody, except to help two special needs children have extra equipment that they need. So I actually would like to know what the practicality is of that plastic shed being on the property, if it's not doing anybody harm.
And I can certainly understand your position. I'd say that our responsibility is not necessarily to justify or to say why the ordinance was written. We don't really have say on that as a board. Our responsibility is to see if the requests for appeal meet the standard, and to try to rule one way or the other. I can certainly understand your position, but that's our, that is our responsibility, regardless of what other items might have happened in the past.
So, is it the responsibility of the township to give correct information when you are placing something on the property?
I would not speak to that, other than that's not the responsibility of this board this evening.
Well, I just want the board to know all the circumstances before they consider, you know, not giving the variance.
And I, and I appreciate the position, and I think I recognize what you're saying. Any other comments or questions from the board? Mr. Skurdo, Mr. Aloya, anything for you before we move to motion? All right, with that said, if there's no further discussion, I would entertain a motion.
I would make a motion to deny this request based on the fact that a practical difficulty does not exist.
Motion by Mr. DeBruin. Is there support?
Support.
Support by Mr. DeCoster. Ms. Lawson, please call the roll.
I'll start with Member DeBruin.
Yes.
DeCoster?
Yes.
Piper?
Yes.
Tuckfield?
Yes.
Lawson, yes.
All right.
Can I ask a question? I just...
At the moment, at the moment, no. We certainly will be here. There will be a chance for public comments. And you're welcome to talk to Mr., Mr...
It's just, I have these papers that say people accepted the variance. So how is it not, all these people said I, they're okay with the variance that are on this paper. So how is it not okay with the board?
We're not going to, we're not going to get into a discussion about that at the moment. I'm certainly willing, if you wait around to the end, I'm happy to talk to you. There's certainly a public comment period at the end of the meeting. But that is the motion, and it was voted on and passed. All right, that moves us on to new business. Item 8A, which is a variance request from the zoning ordinance. Section 10, pardon me, the address would be 17016 25 Mile Road, section 10.1505G. This is a request to allow a reduction in green belt from 20 feet to eight feet, permanent parcel 0808101045 and 0808101046. Mr. Skurdo, could you give the recommendation on this, please?
Sure. As a background, as you notice, the property, there's two properties there located that's under consideration. They are undeveloped. They're currently zoned O1 office. There is a request in to rezone that property to C1, which is a neighborhood commercial. Based on that request, the applicant, in a site plan that was turned in as part of that zoning request, the applicant would need a 25-foot setback in addition to a wall. They are asking for eight feet. As currently zoned, the O1, a variance would not be needed as presented if the rezoning doesn't go through. Our recommendation at this point is postpone any decision on this case until the rezoning is decided. So we understand if that property is a C1 commercial, or if it's an O1 office. Because that will determine whether you need to issue a variance or not.
Very good. Appreciate, Mr. Skurdo. Is the applicant in the audience for this item? If you are, could you come up here, sir, just to the podium for a second? I appreciate it. And if you could state your name and address for the record?
Hi, I'm Joe Rudriello.
Hey, Joe.
Hi, so good.
You're what Mr. Skurdo said. He's recommending we table it. Generally, we follow the recommendation. But, that said, I believe we do still have the latitude to hear this if you wish to hear it at this time. Are you okay if we table it? Is that, are you, are you fine with that?
These are my architects. I would...
I guess to clarify is...
Sorry, sir, if you could come up to the podium and state your name.
A big architect. To clarify, the reason you're table is because it's not rezoned to C1 yet.
Yes, correct.
So they can't actually make any recommendation, approvals or disapprovals?
That is correct.
Yeah, okay. So, we have to come back and have it rezoned first?
In this case, I think it's the wisest thing to do, make sure you got the zoning in place.
Thanks, Seth.
So just verifying with you, you're okay with this, with the tabling? I believe, and Mr. Skurdo, you can correct me if I'm wrong. I don't believe there is an additional fee. We would typically...
Not if we postpone it. Denial will cause additional fee. Postponement does not.
Mr. Skurdo, you have a, do you have a specific meeting that we would look to be postponing this to? Or postpone pending the...
I don't know. I don't know when the zoning is coming up, when the rezoning request. I don't know if the applicant knows when he's on.
Do you know by any chance?
It's always been scheduled. I don't know when.
Then, what I would say is that we probably should table it for one month.
Okay.
If you are amenable to that.
Yeah.
And then pending the planning commission, if the planning commission has not yet seen or approved the rezoning, if it was up on our agenda, we would then table it again.
Okay.
Assuming, Mr. Skurdo, sorry, you may not know this. Do you know if we have items on next month's agenda?
No, I don't.
Okay. If we table it in next month as an agenda, are we better off to table this to, to a date based on the rezoning?
Our recommendation is to table this matter until such time, to the meeting which follows the rezoning here.
Correct.
So... Makes sense.
That will direct administration to set it for the ZBA hearing following the rezoning. And at that time, we'll be able to know whether or not this variance is even necessary.
And to the applicant, you're okay with that?
Yeah.
Okay, very good. All that said, I'm going to bring it back to the board for a motion for tabling, following Mr. Aloya's language that he just mentioned.
I would make a motion to table it until the first meeting following the zoning issue that's ahead.
Support.
All right, motion by Mr. DeBruin, supported by Ms. Lawson, to table this item until the meeting following when this item is at the planning commission. Ms. Lawson, please call the roll on this.
Okay, I'm starting with Member DeCoster.
Yes.
Member DeBruin?
Yes.
Member Piper?
Yes.
Chairman Tuckfield?
Yes.
And Lawson is yes.
All right, very good.
Thanks, guys. Have a great night.
You as well.
This rendering is spectacular, too. It almost looks like the building actually exists there right now. I'm looking at it like, I couldn't, I'm looking at it like it's actually there, so you fooled me.
Yeah.
All right, moving on to item 8B. This is a request for 18362 Tiger Drive, section of the zoning ordinance 10.0356A1. A request to allow an open-air structure to be partially enclosed, permanent parcel 0805477008. And Mr. Skurdo, please take us through the recommendations.
Correct. Thank you, Mr. Tuckfield. If you look up at the screen above you, the aerial photograph does not show the extension. It shows the patio prior to the extension. The open-air structure was built according to the applicant. The contractor did not pull permits. If he had pulled permits, we would have caught at that point that the structure, as you can see, the sides, it turns into a three-strided structure. It does not meet the definition of an open-air structure. As stated, they have to meet the rear setback requirement of 35 feet because it is enclosed on three sides. So the applicant is here to get a variance to consider this an open-air structure, because the rear is totally open, even though the sides are enclosed. And there's, we did not see a practical difficulty as plans were not received prior to this being built. And we could have caught that at the point if a permit was pulled.
All right, thank you, Mr. Skurdo. Any questions for Mr. Skurdo from the board? Hearing none. Is the applicant in the audience? Sir, if you could come up here, state your name and address for the record, and give any comments you might have.
Joe Genovese, Antonet Genovese, 18362 Tiger. Just to clarify the records, the original structure was permitted. The roof itself was. That was permitted. That was done the year before. As far as the sides, we hired the contractor. We were under the impression he did pull the permits. That's why we hired a contractor. As far as any difficulty, the backyard is very windy. It's an oblong, oddly shaped lot. I believe one side is actually much deeper than the other side. Anything to add?
Yeah, it's sufficient, six and a half feet only on that one corner. And when we're talking about the wind, it is unbearable, but it takes the patio furniture, and it pushes it over to the backyard neighbors. Currently, we have a backyard neighbor who has trees up, so we don't have to go get our stuff out of their backyard. So our belongings can stay in our backyard from that one wall that is on the deeper end of that side.
And ma'am, if you could, I know, if you could just state your name and address for the record.
Antonet Genovese, 18362 Tiger.
Thank you. Any questions, if you were done? I shouldn't cut you off.
Not sure what else to add.
Understood.
We have two children that are kind of sensitive to the elements.
Okay.
You know, sun, wind, et cetera. We have three children, actually, but two are very sensitive.
Very good. Any questions from the board to the applicants?
Is there a picture of the enclosure? Did they submit that as part of it?
Yeah, he did show that right there.
I think, Mr. Skurdo, that I... And Mr. Skurdo, just to confirm, this is the right and left sides that are enclosed in the back walls?
Correct, not the rear. And the setback of 35 feet, when we measured, if you're looking at the drawing, it's, I'm trying to get the dimension of the angle, but it'd be more along the southwest corner. That corner of the thing actually meets a setback dimension. It's as you move to the east, which to the right, is where the setback becomes impacted, or becomes deficient.
So if the rear corner of the property line was even, even with the front corner of the property line, assuming the decent deepest point, they would not be having an issue here?
Correct.
Except for the enclosure. Well, but that's what Mr. Skurdo is saying, is if the enclosure forces them to have the structure set.
Certainly, I got you.
Yeah. Any other questions from the board? Hearing none, I'd like to open this up for public comment with motion. Do I have a motion open to public comment?
Motion?
Of support?
Motion by Ms. Lawson, supported by Mr. DeBruin. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, nay. Public comment for this item is open. If you have anything you would like to say on this item, please come up to the podium. State your name and address for the record. Give any comments you might have, and remember that we have a four-minute time limit on public comments this evening.
My name's Daryl Marjima. I live on 18425 Palmer, directly south of the structure. As far as comments about being windy in the area, it is. And I think my property may take the brunt of that. But no one seems to have an issue with things blowing around. I think it's just common sense not to put lightweight things out into the wind. So, you know, keep it contained or, you know, held down. Closing it just for the wind, I think, is totally unnecessary. The second thing, and I believe to be the majority of the issue that we have, is the side structures, it's creating an amphitheater effect. And we're getting a sound amplification into our house, directly pointed at our house. Things that were barely noticeable, we can now hear directly inside our house. Dog barking, TV on. It's loud. So we actually have to turn up our own interior noise because of the loud sounds that are coming in. Something that, simple as a conversation on their side, which was indistinguishable, can be heard verbatim. I mean, I can hear them word for word, sitting on my deck. Again, because of the amplification sound, you know, closed-in walls, all the sound coming out directly at me. So, you know, as far as I'm concerned, you know, that's the biggest effect. And, you know, we would recommend denial because of the additional noise. Thank you. Thank you.
Anyone else on this item? Seeing none, and without objection, I'm going to close public comment and bring it back to the board. Mr. Skirdo, question. If the, probably the right side wall was moved into the point where, at that point, it was far enough from the back setback, with the remaining portion outside of it that now did not have three walls, would that meet the ordinance? You understand what I'm saying? So if they move the wing wall and split that area in half, I'm just curious, how would we count that?
Boy, it'd still be, it was still being considered an enclosed structure.
If you're an enclosed structure, at which point the footprint of it would be what would violate the setback.
Right now, we're determining an enclosed structure, as opposed to an open structure.
Right.
So we would still have to determine that as an enclosed structure.
Okay. Alright, any other comments or questions from the board?
I have a question. Mr. Bruin, Mr. Aloya. Would the shape of the lot present a practical difficulty in that one side of this deck does meet criteria and the other side doesn't? Would that be reasonable?
So, you're asking if the size of the lot would create a practical difficulty?
The shape of the lot.
The shape of the lot.
The shape of the lot, since one side of this structure does meet code and the other side doesn't because of the shape of the lot.
Yeah, I was trying to find the ordinance, I was trying to, because it's not really stated here. The issue is that it's partially enclosed, correct?
That's the issue in front of us tonight, is partially versus fully enclosed.
Fully enclosed. So, if my recollection, we had a hearing, there was an issue relating to the degree of partially closed. That was the issue, remember we had that?
Mm-hmm.
And it wasn't fully defined within the ordinance. And I think that's more the issue before the board today, is whether or not, and I, and I don't have the code section in front of me, but...
I don't either.
Okay, I'll find it. But the issue is whether or not it's partial, it meets that definition.
I understand now. I was confused that I thought the two sides made for a larger setback, and that the sides were in fact allowed, but just with a longer setback. But that is not the case. The case is that it's, is that we're trying to decide whether this is enclosed or not enclosed.
I don't, I don't think Mr. Skirdo, does the setback have any effect on this ordinance application at all, based on the variance?
Yeah, I'd have to do, roughly speaking, if they met the 35 feet, they would allow, be allowed to put a structure in there. There's a 35-foot rear yard setback.
So this structure would be allowed if that fence were 35 feet back?
Correct.
And it would be allowed within its existing setbacks if it did not have two walls by the current definition, because it wouldn't be considered a structure.
So your answer would be yes. The dimensions of the lot is something you can consider, whether that meets the practical difficulties.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
I do have a question. I noticed in one of the recommendations, it talked about there's a consideration, they're looking at changing the ordinance, and this may not even eventually be a factor for this person. Is that, is that true? Is it possible that...
We aren't far enough down, let you know, we aren't far enough down that road to determine. We just wanna put in there that, there has been talk from the building department about looking at that criteria.
Okay, okay. Thank you.
Okay.
Any other questions?
So it looks like the ordinance says an open, the open-air structure shall not be enclosed or partially enclosed with walls.
If I remember, before, when we looked at it last time, I think the discussion was that the wall did not reach from the floor to the ceiling.
Yeah, if I remember right, that was almost a...
It was a half wall.
Yeah, because that was over, or the...
Right.
Yeah.
balcony essentially of the deck.
Yes.
Again, so we're not, we're not gonna prove a variance for a setback. This is literally, is it an interpretation, whether or not this is open air?
Correct. That's what's in front.
So can we just clarify what the issue is before the ZBA, Mr. Skirdo, today? Is it an ordinance interpretation or is it a request for a variance?
I'm looking for the application.
It says it's requested a variance.
Yeah.
So...
It's referring, it's referring to...
Specific section number and description of the variance requested is cited as 10.0356A1.
Actually, is the portion that defines, that that specific says the open-air structure shall not be enclosed or partially enclosed within walls, which if we were looking at setback as opposed to a definition, I would think we would cite a different portion of the board.
I'm looking at...
But I think what Mr. Skirdo pointed out, and Mr. DeBruin pointed out, is that if it was setback further than this, this section wouldn't apply. Am I correct?
Correct.
So that could be your consideration for variance, is that there's a practical, if you determine there's a practical difficulty based on the size of the lot, that could be a basis for your variance, if you decide that that's it.
I'm looking at the application right now, and they're referencing, the building department's referencing section 10.0356, point A, point one, open air to partially enclosed.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm gonna, like the look of it, the more I read this ordinance, where it says the open-air structure shall not be enclosed or partially enclosed with walls.
But I think, Mr. DeCosta, I think that goes back to whether or not this is a definition, or this is a variance. If it's a definition, then we, I think then we look to see whether or not, whether or not this meets the standard of a partially or non-partially enclosed. If it's whether it can be allowed to fall into the setback, then, then I, then maybe, whether or not it's open or closed may not make a difference.
But again, our...
Setback question isn't before us.
Yeah, but again, just to clarify, the setback, we're not necessarily looking at, correct?
You're looking, yes, you're looking at the way the application's written, you're looking at open-air versus closed, partially enclosed structure.
And again, I mean, I think that being said, I mean, if you look at the ordinance and, I mean, I hate to say it, in my eye, I see that as partially enclosed, if you read towards the...
So if you, if you believe it's partially enclosed and that's your interpretation, again, this is a request for a variance, though, okay? So if you do, if you believe that it does not meet the ordinance based on the definition, then your issue is to consider whether or not a variance should be based on the definition.
If, if we were to do that, Mr. Aloya, would it be proper for us to vote to determine the definition and then look at further issues? Or would we, would we essentially poll the board to determine whether there are further issues and then, and then accept motions on a variance if any member chose to put one forth?
I think you could vote based on, you know, the generic nature of this application to say whether or not this is an enclosed or partially enclosed structure.
And then, based on that, potentially entertain further discussion.
Correct.
Okay. I think that's what we're going to do, then. And does the applicant, are you following what we're, what we're talking through here?
Not really.
Alright.
Sorry.
I'm not sure that I'm gonna be good at explaining it to you and maintaining my position here, other than we're trying to make sure we follow our protocol correctly to get to the answer. I think we're going to have a vote here on determining whether we believe that the structure that your contractor built meets the definition of a partial, partially enclosed structure or not, whether it's not one. And then if that was to, if we believe that it is, then we would then look further to see if we thought a variance could be granted in this case for being within the setback. This is what we're gonna proceed with.
That would take into consideration that the one, the one side of the lot does fulfill that.
I believe that would be a consideration at that point. I cannot, obviously, I'm not gonna say what the board would decide at that point, but that would be a consideration, yes. Alright, with that, I'll entertain a motion on determining if this structure meets the open, is an open-air structure or an enclosed structure.
I'll make a motion that the interpret, my interpretation of the structure does not meet the definition of an open-air structure as cited in section 10 dot 0356A1.
Support. Motion by Mr. DeCosta, supported by Mr. DeBruin. Ms. Lawson, please call the roll.
Okay, I'll start with Member DeCosta.
Yes.
Member DeBruin.
Yes.
Member Tuckfield.
Yes.
Member Piper.
No.
And Member Lawson, yes.
Alright, so that motion passed four to one, so the decision was that we don't believe that it counts as a, or as an open-air structure. So now, I think I would entertain motions for a variance request on this. And if there are motions, we would then have discussion on the motion. I think is probably the best way to handle it. Unless, Mr. Aloya, I would assume we wouldn't want to do the discussion first.
I think you're, I think you're fine, go ahead.
Okay. With that, I would entertain a motion for a variance on this item, because of other things we've discussed.
So based on my line of questioning, I would make a motion to grant a variance based on the practical difficulty of the shape of this lot, with one part of this structure being within setback and the other side being without.
Alright, motion by Mr. DeBruin, is there support?
I will support that.
Supported by Mr. DeCosta, is there discussion? Mr. Skirdo, was there anything else, if we vote on this motion, that we need to add to this? Is there any other items that are outstanding that we're not thinking of, since...
I know, there's just, it was the, it was the open-air structure and now that you have a setback issue in front of you.
And granted, you're not here every day, but are you comfortable from the planning department's perspective, if we vote on this variance, is there anything else that you would want to add? Obviously, this did not officially go before the review, that's not typical for us.
I know, I'm comfortable with the way the motion is presented. There's nothing, there's no other issues that we have determined.
Okay. Very good. Mr. Aloya, you agree with where we are?
Very satisfied with the process.
Okay. Thank you. Alright, that said, we have a motion on the floor from Mr. DeBruin, supported by Mr. DeCosta. If there's no further discussion, Dave, Don, anything, Ms. Lawson, please call the roll.
Okay, I'll start with Member DeBruin.
Yes.
Member DeCosta.
Yes.
Member Tuckfield.
Yes.
Member Lawson, yes. Member Piper.
Yes.
Alright, that motion passes five to nothing. Thank you for coming in. I hope you have a good afternoon. Alright, that moves us on to our last agenda item for variance requests this evening, which is a request to vary from the zoning ordinance for permanent, or, I'm messing up my routine here. For the address of 1-8568 Cheryl Drive, this is for section 10.0338. A request to allow a recreational vehicle to be parked in a private residential driveway for more than 24 hours a day. This is for permanent parcel 0829250016. Mr. Skirdo, please take us through this.
Sure. You'll see the, behind you, you'll see a picture on the left of the vehicle in question. You'll see the property on the right-hand side of Cheryl Drive, it's on Cheryl Drive. It is a recreational vehicle. We looked at the registration through the building department. It is considered a motor home, as written on the registration. This is, in terms of the ordinance, a motor home or recreational vehicle is not permitted to occupy a driveway for over 24 hours. The applicant, as stated, they use the RV as their daily vehicle. We don't, it does not appear there's gonna be any unique circumstance with the property that necessitates the variance. If a variance, even if a variance is granted, the HOA does not allow the parking of recreational vehicles in a sub. Again, that's a private issue that the HOA has to take up with them. It's not anything to do with the township, and it's a private enforcement action. As of right now, staff does not see any practical difficulties, since we saw the registration, the building departments clarified their determination. It qualifies as a recreational vehicle and it must respect that 24-hour rule.
Alright, thank you, Mr. Skirdo. Any questions from the board to Mr. Skirdo? I did have one. You mentioned that you had looked up the classification on this as an RV.
Yes.
I believe that's based on weight limits from the state of Michigan, is that...
I believe it's weight limits, axle size, things like that, how they determine it. I have a number of photos. I'm looking at the Michigan registration with the plate number on it, and at the top right of that registration, it shows it's classified as a motor home by the state of Michigan.
So just to, just to verify that, that's not something that's subjective to a definition of our ordinance, that is us recognizing a larger authority than us that defines what it is?
Correct.
Okay, very good. With that being said, I'm going to bring it back out to the audience to look for the applicant. Is the applicant on this item here tonight? Sir, if you could come forward and sit at the podium, state your name and address, and give any comments you might have. And ma'am, certainly, if you'd like to speak, feel free to give your name and address as well, if you could.
I live at the same address.
Okay.
Yeah, Robert Brackett, 1-8568 Cheryl Drive, McComb, Michigan.
ELD Ball, 1-8568 Cheryl Drive.
Very good. Did you have any comments for us this evening?
Yes, as far as the vehicle, as you can see the pictures, it fits in the driveway between the garage and does not block the sidewalk. When I purchased it, I, not knowing that there was a township variance about this, I didn't, it didn't cross my mind. I just wanted something that would fit in the driveway. We use it a lot. Drive it on a not every day basis, but quite frequently. Actually put more miles on this vehicle than other vehicles. I drive it to the grocery store, drive it to the doctor's office. I make, run errands with it. It's actually more comfortable for me. I have arthritis and knee problems, and it's actually the most comfortable vehicle for me to drive. As far as the, my neighbors, you mentioned there was a homeowners. I'm in the process of changing the, the, getting a change to the homeowners, having it amended. You need 75% to change a rule on that. And I have nearly that many that I've petitioned in our neighborhood that have signed off, that have said that they, they don't have a problem and they're willing to change that. I just kinda put that on hold for now, because I wanted to put this part of it to rest first, before I continue. It doesn't make much sense, though. What's that?
We've, we've kept a log of, from the time we took possession of it till through now, of where we've gone and what we've done with it. And it, we've been, it's moved every 24 hours, if not maybe a few days, if we're doing major upgrades on it or anything like that, and loading and unloading and repacking it. So it's not in the driveway for maybe 48.
We purchased it in April and have just under 7,000 miles on it. Now, the first, maybe 2,000 were a trip that we made south, where we were gone over a month. The rest of it has been all within Michigan, you know, driving around, which, I have two other vehicles that I've had for, one's a 2018 and one's a 2012. Those vehicles only have just over 50,000 miles on each of them. So I don't drive huge amounts, so I, I mean, I'm not gonna say that I drive it every day, but I drive it more than I do the other two vehicles. The other thing being, with the way my property's set up, there's no way for me to get it around the side to the back, because that would be an option. I was told that I could park it in the back without a problem. There are many people along Romeo Plank that I can see from my door wall that park their trailers in their backyards. There are also a lot of people that park trailers and other motorhomes and things all over the township without a problem. It just comes down to whether or not somebody complains about it, I realize that. The, if I were to, one of the options I was told was, oh, well, I should put it in outside storage, which I did have a travel trailer previous to this, which I stored offsite. Now, to do that, I had to, had to drive to Richmond is where I had it. I had to drive there, pick it up, bring it back, which being inconvenient, but doable. With this, it's a little different. I mean, this is a drivable vehicle. If you don't drive it, there are things that, you know, batteries are gonna, gonna go bad on you. The, if I were to put it in storage, I would have to somehow get a ride there to get it and then bring it home, and then pack it up or whatever if I was gonna go somewhere. It wouldn't be practical for me to use it on a day-to-day basis, you know. Yeah, I suppose I could use it for travel, it'd be inconvenient. One of the reasons I got this particular vehicle is that it's, it's a very small Class C motor home, and some people actually use them as their, you know, only form of transportation. I'm at a forum with similar... I'm at a forum with, um, with similar, um, people that own these across the country. And I know one in particular that, um, that, that's exactly what they do. This, um, person has, um, some autoimmune, um, issues and tries to stay as isolated as possible. And it's a, a good way to travel, stay isolated, so.
You have to find a storage facility that has electricity to be able to charge the batteries and keep going. Because if you let them sit, just like you let your car sit all winter, it's not going to start. So that would require extra maintenance, extra cost on our, our part. But we do, I mean, we have a log here and you're more than welcome to look at our log. We, you know, we've been driving it about every day.
Understood. Any questions from the board to the applicant or applicants? Uh, hearing none, um, I'll entertain a motion to open up to public comment.
Motion to open, public comment?
Motion by Ms. Lawson, is there support?
Support.
Supported by Mr. DeBruin. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed by saying nay. Uh, public comment is open. If you, you have any comments on this, please come forward to the podium. State your name and address for the record and, uh, please remember you'll have a four-minute, uh, time limit.
Hi, my name's Karen Coleman. I live at one eight five three zero Cheryl, just west of the, uh, home where the motor home is parked. This ordinance is not ambiguous. No RVs such as, but not limited to, motor homes shall be permitted to be parked or stored in residential driveways for more than twenty-four hours. Additionally, as you know, our HOA does not permit motor homes to be parked in driveways at all. This homeowner was one of the first homes in the neighborhood and knew this, but he did it anyway. He decided because he now wants to park a motor home in his driveway that the HOA CNRs are outdated. He says rules are made to be broken. Really? Is that why we have rules? There are reasons the township and most HOAs have a restriction like this in place. Safety and aesthetics are one of, are in the top ten. And residents don't want to live in an RV storage lot. He's walked around the neighborhood, in his words, smooth-talking other neighbors into signing his petition to let him park the motor home in his driveway. I'd be willing to bet he doesn't mention that there's also a township ordinance that restricts this. I also don't think the residents he's talked to realize the safety issues this eleven feet tall, eight feet wide, twenty-five foot long obstruction in his driveway creates. They also don't have to look at it every day, so it really doesn't affect them, until one day it might. I often watch families taking walks with their little ones and they ride or, and they run or ride their bike ahead from the parents. Sightlines from the sidewalk are obstructed and it could be disastrous. We hear or read about accidents all the time when there is no obstruction. Accidents can happen in an instant. And granting a variance for this obstruction could prove to be gross negligence on the part of this board. We can no longer see our neighbor's yard or their home when looking out our front window. Sometimes it's a neighbor who first sees, a fire or intruder before the homeowner even does. This is not safe or pleasing. All we see now is a big gray and black box. He claims that he uses the motor home daily for errands. That's a farce and ridiculous in and of itself. I mean, why would he? He also has a pickup and SUV parked in that driveway that he uses regularly to run errands. It seems he only began to drive the motor home for errands when he was notified of the violation from the HOA. I work from home and the motor home rarely leaves the driveway, much less day-to-day. He also mentioned that he doesn't want to play games moving the motor home from the driveway to the street every twenty-four hours. This leads us to believe he will attempt to circumvent the ordinance anyway. The ordinance may need to be revised to prevent attempts like this. Additionally, he mentioned that the zone and code enforcement officers have told him they're tired of coming out for this issue, but must do so whenever there's a complaint. They, he says they don't care if he parks a motor home in his driveway. If true, that's completely unethical and cause for concern. As you might guess, the stories and embellishments have caused conflict in the neighborhood. There's no benefit to our neighborhood or the township to grant this ordinance. We ask that the township enforce the ordinance and monitor the situation should he try to circumvent it. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Seeing none, uh, without objection, I'm going to close public comment.
Mr. Tuckfield, before you close the public hearing, we did receive, I think there's a letter in your packet.
We did.
I do believe any letter should be entered into the record.
Um, to do that, do you want, uh, you want me to read it? Um, I believe we have some in our packet or just-
Um, Mr. Lick, can you summarize a letter? We have a letter of opposition in our packet.
You want to summarize it?
Pardon me?
You're asking to summarize-
The question is, we have a letter of opposition. I believe it needs to be entered into the record. It was received before the deadline that we give people.
If it was in the packet, then we're fine.
We're fine. We don't need to read it and it's included in the packet.
That's correct.
Uh, part of the record, it's okay.
That's right.
Okay.
And, and I should note for the record that we did receive, actually on multiple items this evening, multiple letters. Um, and I know that I have read them. I'm, I know multiple other board members mentioned to me that we had a lot of letters that we had all read. So if you sent a letter in, we appreciate it. I'm, I'm sure it has been read, because I talked pretty much everything about that.
Excuse me, the, um, as far as the, there was a mention as far as, um-
Well, well, give us just a second.
Okay.
Give us just a second. All right, uh, with that said, uh, we're good as long as they're in the, in the packet. So without objection, then I will close the public comment, bring it back to the board. Get to you in just a second. Is there any comments or questions from the board? Uh, Mr. Skirdo, did you have anything on the comment? I know sometimes we do this, the planning commission, we don't do it all, the ZBA. Was there anything you wanted to address from that?
Uh, no, we just have to keep in mind, however you decide, there's precedent set. So this may be one site here, but this may translate into multiple sites throughout the township.
Thank you, Mr. Skirdo. Go ahead, sorry.
Uh, just, um, there's a lot of, uh, mention of how often the, uh, motor home has been used and so forth. And I have that here, so, I mean, it doesn't have to be somebody's word against somebody else's word. It's right here, if you want to look at this log. I also have my petition that I went around and I was not sweet-talking the neighbors. You can read the petition. You can see that there's almost zero, um, opposition to what I was asking them. And it's, and it's stated on here, plain English, you know, it's, it's not a, a matter of me smooth-talking the neighbors or trying to break rules. I didn't know these rules even existed. So our, our, um, homeowners association that she's referring to was from nineteen ninety-eight and nothing has been changed in it. Our board has tried to make changes illegally, which I've had to go to meetings and, uh, point out that they didn't follow the procedures and those were shot down. It references things like you can, uh, um, you can respond by telegraph. That's how old these rules are. It really does. And it, it has definitions in there about family that would be thrown out, you know, that don't apply today. It states things like, uh, no political signs, which-
And I'll just, I'll just mention it and I'll let you go ahead, but, but keep in mind that, um, relative to HOA rules, if we were to grant this, we would state that HOA rules would still apply, but relative to our decision, whether, whether or not the HOA allows it or doesn't, really has no bearing.
Right, right.
And I would, I would say also with the, with, with twenty-four hours, if, if there is some difference in the ordinance and, and if you move the car or the vehicle or the RV in and out every twenty-four hours, that's separate from our decision. Our decision tonight is whether or not we would be granting a variance to allow you to keep it there by rights for longer than twenty-four hours.
And, and the comment about moving at twenty-four hours, obviously, what I was stating was that I don't want to do that. I want to do things the right way, that's why I'm trying to get a variance. I don't want to say, well, oh, I moved it twenty-four hours ago, I'm going to move it again. I purposely park it where I do so it's the least intrusive. I don't put it on the street. There are people that park trailers on the street for a week at a time that block half, half the road. I have a neighbor that had a pod in his driveway for about two months. You know, the, this is a, um, this is a, become a personal issue with, as far as, uh, a couple of members on a board that are, you know, trying to make this a personal issue. And that's, it's not, um, a large majority of the people that live in that subdivision do not have a problem with us. They even laugh, they don't understand why it's even a problem, which I didn't understand why it was a, uh, that there was a township ordinance. So that, that did surprise me. I understood why it wouldn't be on the street for twenty-four hours. I didn't understand why you couldn't have a vehicle that you drive all the time parked in your driveway as long as you're not blocking the sidewalk. That didn't make a lot of sense to me. So that surprised me when I read that.
And that's understood. And I would just tell you that for our decision tonight, um, and I think you may have seen it with other decisions we had tonight.
Yep.
Whether there is, whether there is opposition or there is not opposition from the neighbors, typically that does not play into our decision. Because our decision is not whether it's popular, it's whether it meets a standard. So for the good or for the bad, uh, we try to take the comments to see whether they are applicable to what we're referencing. But we, we see plenty of, uh, we see plenty of neighbor unhappiness and for better or for the worse, it, it, it should not and, and typically does not, hopefully always does not, enter into our decision, so. All right, uh, with that, any comments or motions from the board?
I will make a motion, uh, I would, my motion would be to deny this variance. I don't see a hardship here. To me, this is an RV, a recreational vehicle that's parked in the driveway that's clearly against our ordinance. Uh, so my decision would be to request, or to deny the variance request under section ten dot zero three three eight to request to allow a recreational vehicle to be parked in the private residential driveway for more than twenty-four hours a day.
Support. Motion by Mr. DeCosta, supported by Mr. Bruin. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, Ms. Lawson, please call the roll.
I'll start with Member DeCosta.
Yes.
Member DeBruin.
Yes.
Member Slosson, yes. Uh, Chairman Tuckfield.
Yes.
And Member Piper.
Yes.
All right, that motion is passed, the variance is denied. We appreciate you coming in and I hope you have a good evening. Thank you. All right, the next item is public comments. This is item nine. Uh, any member from the public can get up and speak if they so choose. Uh, please keep in mind you have a four-minute time limit, uh, and give any comments you might have. Seeing none, I'm going to move on from public comments to ZBA member comments. Any comments this evening from any of the board members?
I have nothing.
Uh, I would just comment on one thing. Um, at our last planning commission meeting, uh, the planning commission saw a initial, early, unreviewed, fully draft of the new ordinance.
Say that again.
For comments, Mr. Uh, Mr. O'Leary, underline a few rows, make sure we didn't make any decisions.
Okay, now I get it.
Very, very raw. Um, it's very early stages, uh, but I appreciated the planning commission, uh, getting a chance to look at it, even though I, I believe Mr., I'm giving Mr. O'Leary a hard, a hard time, but I think he had some heartburn. But we appreciated being, uh, brought into the process early on. Uh, there was a good deal of discussion on it. Obviously rewriting the ordinance, which is what is going to happen, uh, can be really good and also can be really bad. Cause if we're not careful, we can create more problems than we, uh, than we started with, so, um, we got our first chance to read it. I don't know what the timeline is, but, uh, I'm sure Mr. Box will keep us updated, but I'll also keep you updated. Uh, and if anyone's interested, as I have copies and assuming that, uh, I have authorization from Mr. Box, I'll be happy to pass those out if anybody, uh, if anybody's interested in reading them once we get to more of a, a formal draft stage.
Yeah, I, I just, I would forewarn you that, you know, talks internally since the meeting have been, we believe there are going to be significant changes to those drafts, so. Um, any supposition that that's close to the final form would not be accurate. And so we believe it's going to be in our best interest to vet some of these out and then give PC a more advanced copy later to review before we bring it back to PC.
Un- understood, and, and I, I would, I would mention that to the ZBA. I less would bring up specific items at the moment just because as Mr. O'Leary said, it's very early stages. More just a, an information item to let you know it is being looked at. Uh, we have seen some early things, there have been some comments. Um, and as we know more and as we're, as we're clear to, uh, as we're cleared to hand it out, um, we certainly, I'd be, be interested in getting any comments, anybody from this board has.
I will say, from when I was in the audience, there's, I didn't have a clue what was being discussed.
It was, uh, yes, it was interesting. I, uh, Mr. O'Leary's concern aside, which I can understand, and that's why he's here and we appreciate him being here. I was really appreciative that the planning department gave us the chance to read it, even at an early stage, so.
You're going to see it later for sure.
Yes, yeah.
And that was my intent for coming to the meeting, because I was hoping to see what the changes were that were coming. You know, they're going to affect me somewhere down the road.
And I think as it goes forward, whenever, whenever there's a more formal draft, I think the idea is to do some workshops, to go through specific sections, to read them, uh, to give comments, to have comments and, and, uh, yeah. So if anybody's interested, uh, let me know, I guess after the meeting and I'll, I'll make sure, obviously, assuming Mr. Box is okay with it, try to make sure people have the chance to, to see those and pass any, pass on any comments. Obviously, the planning commission sees projects, we see where the ordinance might have a rough spot. So I try to make sure I convey that information to the planning commission, but I'm not the only person on this board who, who reads it, so. Uh, that's all I had this evening. Um, Mr. Uh, Skirdo, anything from the planning department for us?
Um, you, you just summarized it.
Sorry. Um, Mr. O'Leary, anything from you this evening?
Uh, we are, Mr. Skirdo and I are, and, uh, the planning department are discussing a, uh, a seminar-type workshop for both ZBA and planning commission about, uh, legal updates, uh, kind of parliamentary rules and meeting procedures and stuff. I think we want to just do a refresher for everybody, um, we're talking about hopefully by the end of the year, so. If we're not too distracted with the zoning ordinance, so, uh, that's one of the things we're talking about doing.
Sounds really good. I think everyone will appreciate it. Um, it's good to have everything, uh, run correctly and, and operating correctly. All right, uh, with that, I think that takes us on to item twelve, which is adjournment. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Motion by Ms. Lawson, is there support?
Support.
Supported by Mr. Piper. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed by saying nay. At seven thirty-six, the zoning board of appeals stands adjourned.